Meeting on this October 2nd. We're already in October. The year has flown by. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and our first two items on the agenda are our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, which we will do one after the other. Just want to welcome Salvation Army Pastor Edgar Gurns to the podium for our invocation tonight, and then please res- oh, boy, I butchered that one, didn't I? I apologize, Edgar. I'm just going to say Edgar. Is that okay?
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you, too.
Let us pray. Father, I thank you so much for your goodness and your faithfulness. I just pray that you give us the witness, but most of all, Lord, give us the boldness to do what needs to be done, Lord. Father, at the same time, we ask you for us to understand and to even be in the sense of understanding of what needs to be done for our beautiful city of Casa Grande, Lord. I just pray that you continue. At the same time, Lord, I pray for our pastor, Humes, who is in the hospital at this moment, Lord. I pray that you are with the doctors, your love with the loved ones. Give us a sense of peace, Lord, knowing that he is in your care because you are faithful, Lord. Father, we thank you so much, and we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Joining for the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Let the roll call show that all City Council members are present. Minutes approval.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the City Council regular meeting minutes of September 18, 2023, the Arts and Humanities Commission regular meeting minutes of August 8, 2023, and the Transit Advisory Commission regular meeting minutes of January 11, 2023, and February 8, 2023.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The minutes are approved as presented. Claims against the city, item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated September 13th to 26th, 2023, as presented.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The claims are approved as presented. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes?
We have no changes, Mayor. We do have an executive session scheduled for this evening.
Okay, then I'll move to move the, the-
Item N.
The item N reports. Move that to just before the executive session so it'll follow, I guess, the item J. So reports will move up. Any other changes? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Still moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The agenda is approved. No special presentations. We'll move right to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Was there any council member who wants to remove anything? Anyone from the public? All right. Seeing none, then I'll entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Move to public comments. This is the time in the evening when I will open the floor for public comments. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council, this is your opportunity. We would ask you to state your name and your address when you come to the podium, and then also remember to please keep your comments to three minutes, and also remember that these are not agendaized items, and therefore we cannot have a discussion on the items, but we certainly will listen. Ladies first?
No?
Okay. Good evening. I am the still homeless after two and a half years-
Could you give us your name for the records?
I'm going to. I'm doing a lead-in here. Good evening. I am the still homeless after two and a half years woman, age 75, Jean Henderson, who uses CG Helps' address, and I care about Casa Grande. It is unfortunate that the church groups in Casa Grande cannot become organized enough to host more than one night a week per shelter. Upon my return after greater than two months at the faith-based Hope Cottage Shelter in Flagstaff, I was informed there still was nothing even approximating such in Casa Grande. At Hope Cottage up in Flagstaff, women move in with or without children and live there. They leave 9 to 4, and the doors are locked at 6 o'clock after everybody is in there. I had assumed the Casa Grande churches would have been moving in that direction unless the fear of us has continued. I hear about not having volunteers, but I think it all works together. There are homeless who aren't coming due to the stigma of having been a felon or drug user. They always check us now when we go in. You have to dump your bags. You have to almost be frisked. I asked them if they wanted to one day. In Flagstaff, the shelters care that the person isn't using and is trying to become clean while they're at the shelter. Plus, at least four women were on probation, and they were wearing the little things around their ankles, and they had children, and they were getting in touch with their children every day. Everyone had a daily chore and all worked for the benefit of the shelter, a well-respected one in Flagstaff. Churches would bring evening meals, or businesses would donate such as Chipotle, Chick-fil-A, pizza shops, et cetera. Krispy Kreme donated for some mornings. Most morning meals were made by the disciples, who were helpers for the staff members. There were morning and evening religion discussions with some music videos that were nice. There are so many vacant building areas that could be utilized. About all I hear is excuses as to why there can't be shelters when Yuma, Flagstaff, Phoenix, Tucson, and Cayenta up on Navajo have them. It's a beautiful one up there. In order to be a real city, Casa Grande must show equality for all, including the homeless. All of us who are, for a myriad of reasons, homeless deserve a chance to return to living the way we had. Thank you, and we do appreciate the one night that we're being given. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got to put my eyes on it.
No problem.
My name is Charles Cork. I live at 116 East Date Avenue. Good evening, and thank you for this chance to speak. I'm a volunteer at one of the local churches that provides shelter for the homeless folks. It's kind of strange that it slid right in with the other one. From what I've seen so far, it seems to me the city's approach to the homeless situation is very much like putting a Band-Aid on an arterial wound. It's superficial at best. The city expecting the local churches to provide food and shelter to the estimated 180 homeless individuals that live in this town makes it sound like something's being done, and it may allow someone to say, "We have a program in place," but here's the reality of the situation. I believe currently we have, what, six churches in this program? Homeless people are given shelter one night a week, one night out of seven, 52 nights out of 365 days. That's right around 14%. And among several other things, one of the biggest problems is this: Churches are not designed for residential use. There are no showers. There are no beds. There are no kitchens. Currently, as a stopgap measure, a mobile shower trailer is provided so they can clean themselves up when they arrive. A volunteer barber provides haircuts, and the two meals they'll receive while they stay there overnight are donated by the church. They sleep on the floor, on sleeping mats, pretty much like gym mats, on linens that are delivered on the afternoon they show up, and the next morning they're sent back out the door, right back onto the street. Nothing's changed, other than the fact that they may look just a bit more presentable when they've been fed. To me, it actually seems kind of cruel. Here's some shelter. You'll be here for about 16 hours. Now get out. Nothing's changed for you. I believe there are some city-owned facilities that could serve as homeless shelters, and the churches have already shown they can provide volunteers to work in them. Please give the homeless a chance to reset, and quit allowing them to panhandle, because all that's doing is enabling them to continue in the downward spiral they're caught in, with no chance of breaking out of it. I've seen things that quite literally broke my heart doing this. You know, I take better care of my dogs and cats. I feed them every day. I give them a place to sleep every night. I think we owe at least ways that much to human beings, and they are human beings. They are people. They are sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Nancy Wood, and I live at 513 East Fackel Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. I came in tonight just to kind of briefly, kind of do an update, because I've been in here a number of times. And again, it's about the burrowing owls, because residents end up seeing things with construction and the owls that are native to our area that have been here for a long, long, long time. They see them endangered and end up calling rescues and trying to get help for that when construction crews come up and work starts, and all of a sudden, there's like a crisis that goes on. And I was hoping that maybe the city would consider with the planning and zoning or the council and such, because everybody that comes before you has to go through the planning and zoning and get approval for construction, or there's roadwork that's going to be done. You have plans for sewers and streets and everything else. And we already know that some of these owls in the areas that they've lived in for long periods of time, and we know that there are plans for development. And I have nothing against the development. You know, there's so many things that are needed to be done. We need our roads improved. We have buildings that need to be done. You know, we need to provide services for the people that are coming and staying here and give them a good quality of life and enjoyment and things like that. But the owls and the native wildlife is part of that, and I think that, you know, we need to think about the environment and the impact that we have with doing the things that we want to do. But I think there's the ability to do both, that we can get the developments in and do the improvements, but also include the wildlife in a way that doesn't impact them where they get killed off, or we don't have them anymore, or we get them run off and never see them again. It impacts our whole ecosystem, because they hunt mice and insects and all that thing, and then we don't have to use as many poisons and things. So I'm hoping that with the City Council and planning and zoning and just the different departments that we'd have to do with the developments, if we could protect that without interfering with the people that have to go out and work, because I hate to see them have to stop work and then try to figure out how to deal with an owl that's there so it doesn't get hurt and all that stuff, when if we know ahead of time, they can know that they're there, it can be taken care of, the guys can come in at work, get their stuff done, and everything is like, good. So I hope everybody would consider and think about working out something that might work, and I'm willing to let everybody know where they're at, because I know where a lot of them are. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Nancy Wood, and I live at 513 East Fackel Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. I came in tonight just to kind of briefly, kind of do an update, because I've been in here a number of times. And again, it's about the burrowing owls, because residents end up seeing things with construction and the owls that are native to our area that have been here for a long, long, long time. They see them endangered and end up calling rescues and trying to get help for that when construction crews come up and work starts, and all of a sudden, there's like a crisis that goes on. And I was hoping that maybe the city would consider with the planning and zoning or the council and such, because everybody that comes before you has to go through the planning and zoning and get approval for construction, or there's roadwork that's going to be done. You have plans for sewers and streets and everything else. And we already know that some of these owls in the areas that they've lived in for long periods of time, and we know that there are plans for development. And I have nothing against the development. You know, there's so many things that are needed to be done. We need our roads improved. We have buildings that need to be done. You know, we need to provide services for the people that are coming and staying here and give them a good quality of life and enjoyment and things like that. But the owls and the native wildlife is part of that, and I think that, you know, we need to think about the environment and the impact that we have with doing the things that we want to do. But I think there's the ability to do both, that we can get the developments in and do the improvements, but also include the wildlife in a way that doesn't impact them where they get killed off, or we don't have them anymore, or we get them run off and never see them again. It impacts our whole ecosystem, because they hunt mice and insects and all that thing, and then we don't have to use as many poisons and things. So I'm hoping that with the City Council and planning and zoning and just the different departments that we'd have to do with the developments, if we could protect that without interfering with the people that have to go out and work, because I hate to see them have to stop work and then try to figure out how to deal with an owl that's there so it doesn't get hurt and all that stuff, when if we know ahead of time, they can know that they're there, it can be taken care of, the guys can come in at work, get their stuff done, and everything is like, good. So I hope everybody would consider and think about working out something that might work, and I'm willing to let everybody know where they're at, because I know where a lot of them are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, then I will close the public comments section, and we will move to item I, which is our word of contracts. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract to SCE engineering and design, for design and construction management services for various wastewater CIP projects. Currently, the city is undergoing design development and moving forward with construction of several major projects. I think City Council is aware of those projects through Larry's weekly updates. We do provide that spreadsheet that gives you a progress of where we're moving with each of those projects. The major ones right now are the Quartzon Relief Sewer Line, the West Side Sewer Line, gravity lines over there, two lift stations, as well as the plant expansion. And SCE engineering has helped us through those projects to this point, and this is simply a contract to continue their efforts in helping us move forward with those projects. We currently have one engineer that works out of our office at the engineering facility. They're there two days a week, and then we have other supplemental services that we are provided by this firm. One of them was our project manager on site for the Thornton Road project. Obviously, it's a successful project. We could not have gotten that done without them. So, very important project, contract to have in place. We did budget sufficient funds for this year's budget. This proposal is for $225,000. That does include a $22,000-plus dollar owner's contingency in case we have additional services as part of those projects that we need assistance with. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council member have any questions?
Just a comment. Like you said, I mean, we, there's several big projects that are coming forward here, and it's such a critical time for us, you know, to get these done, and so, you know, for the future, you know, five years out, 10 years out, you know. So I'm glad to see we're moving forward, and thanks for all your hard work in getting this going. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, then I'll request a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5578. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from professional services from Scholinger Consulting Service, Consulting Engineering, P L L C D B A S C E Engineering, to provide design and construction management services for various water capital improvement plan projects, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5578 as presented.
Second. All right. Have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Next, we'll move to I-2. This is considering approval of resolution number 5579.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract with Intellis Inc. for a total bid amount of, excuse me, a submittal amount of $423,324. And that also, we're going to include a $180,000, $5 owner's contingency for a not-to-exceed $603,330 contract. This will be for the design efforts for Treckle Road between McCartney and Rodeo Roads. This is one of the roads that was included in our bond question to the city that was approved, and this is one of those phases of that project. The other project will be McCartney, and that'll be coming back to you here in a few meetings. This will look at widening Treckle Road, looking at the drainage that obviously has a huge impact on that corridor. This will improve the intersection of McCartney and Treckle, which obviously is challenged with school traffic, and it'll also work on any roadway sidewalks, ADA improvements, and anything else that's identified during our evaluation of this project. We did budget adequate funds in this year's budget, and it was identified in the capital projects list that council approved through ordinance number 3382, which allows us to do this request through resolution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I do have one quick question. So we passed a bond on this, too. So the engineering, it comes out of our general fund?
Mr. Mayor, the bond proceeds can be utilized for engineering and design as well. We essentially will be evaluating the total cost, what we've, of these particular components within this project, and essentially evaluating how that compares to the overall bond question, because there were multiple projects, multiple scopes that were, was in that question. So certainly, if, we will find another funding source if there's not sufficient funds, but essentially, the engineers will just now be estimating those.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Glad to see this, and one of our new things, or one thing that's been priority for me and other people, most of us, I think, is getting these roads finished, that we're only half-street improvements and not leaving a bunch of those hanging out. And I know how challenging this one is with all the drainage and all that, but also, as part of the bond is going McCartney north on Treckle at some point down the road, correct? You mentioned phases, and I know our most important was McCartney, and then Treckle right there to McCartney. So, but just so people know, this is the first phase.
And we're doing this simultaneously. It's just two different engineering companies, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're trying to move both projects forward as quickly as we can. This one does have a lot of complications.
Because of the water.
We spent a lot of time working with Intellis. They've got history in the area, so they're very familiar with this area, and when we chose them as the contractor to move forward with for design, we feel comfortable that they really grasp what we're looking for and can identify things that we're going to need to address prior to construction. So we feel very comfortable moving forward. And I also would like to note that there are a lot of streets in Casa Grande that need work, and we're trying our best to prioritize which ones to start with, and this was one that rose to the top very quickly.
Absolutely. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay. Anybody else?
And it's a long time coming. People are going to be very excited to see this. I know I was at Jeff's Town Hall meeting last weekend. That was one of the issues that came up with the parents, is just the traffic and everything on Treckle. So it can't get done fast enough. I know people are going to be frustrated, you know, getting through it, but just still looking forward to it.
Well, and no amount of improvement can handle the slug of traffic during schools. We will make it better, but we will not solve the issue, but we will make it better.
So good luck, Jeff.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Kevin. All right. Seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5579. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Intellis Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the Treckle Road improvements from Rodeo Road to McCartney Road, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve resolution number 5579. Pass for signature.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Let's move on to next, I-3. This is considered approval of resolution number 5580. Kevin?
Yeah, so back to wastewater projects. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract to Sunrise Engineering for Construction Administration and Management Services, and this is for the Quartzon Relief Sewer Project, one of the four that I previously mentioned. Currently, the sewer line in Quartzon serves approximately 50% of our total sewer flows to our plant. Even though it's adequate today, it won't be adequate as we start to add some of the projects that are currently under construction. So we're moving quickly. Yeah, so back to wastewater projects. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract to Sunrise Engineering for Construction Administration and Management Services. And this is for the Quartzon Relief Sewer Project, one of the four that I previously mentioned. Currently, the sewer line in Quartzon serves approximately 50% of our total sewer flows to our plant. Even though it's adequate today, it won't be adequate as we start to add some of the projects that are currently under construction. So we're moving quickly to get this project in place to provide some relief to the existing sewer line. The existing sewer line will remain. This will be a force main that is constructed alongside those mains. So it'll be a dual system in the same right of way. So both systems will exist within that right of way. And this will run from approximately Henness Road all the way to the wastewater treatment facility. There are separate projects that go along with this. One of them is a lift station that will serve this, but that's a separate project, and we'll talk about that at a future meeting. We did have this included in the C I P project list that was authorized by city council by ordinance number 3382, and therefore, we're moving forward with this under resolution for approval tonight, if you so choose. Funding for this in an amount, or excuse me, the submittal for this is 602, excuse me, $206,500. And then we have a owner's contingency of $25,000 for this effort. You'll recall Sunrise, or may recall Sunrise Engineering is the firm that did our entire sewer master plan. They did the design concept report for this sewer main, and it made sense that they'd be the design engineers. And now, moving forward into construction, it makes sense that the engineer of record managed this portion of it as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I had one that someone, resident asked me actually this evening about, and I was trying to explain about the, how you get the smell sometimes, and you taught me a while back that because some of the sewers aren't used enough, because we overbuilt for these new developments, but now they're going in, is that still hold the case, or is there anything going on?
You know, there's a lot of reasons why sewer ends up smelling. Usually, it's when the solids drop out of the liquid flow, and because the city is so flat, we run our sewer mains as less.
At grade?
Thank you. At less grade than possible, just to keep them as efficient as possible, but they're not always that efficient. And there's a lot of other reasons why we get sewer orders, and we try to address those through many methods. One of them being our sewer cleaning program, and then the other one, just looking for those trouble areas. We'll be looking at a couple of projects coming up here in the near future, Treacle Road and Henness Road. Both of those have some of those issues on it. We're trying to address those with repairing those areas. So it's just something that, it's different in every area, but that's, that's part of it.
And the weather's getting cooler, so that might help too.
Force mains typically don't have odor issues because there are no manholes as well.
Thanks.
Comments, questions, anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number 5580, a resolution of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Sunrise Engineering Inc. to provide construction administration and management services for the construction of Quartzon Relief Sewer Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5580 as presented.
Second.
I heard a motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, we'll move to item I four. Kevin?
Oh, Larry, sorry. It was the Kevin Show tonight, so I.
That's right.
I should have looked at it first. Larry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're pleased to ask the mayor and council to consider approval of the ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 314 East Eighth Street from D J Nikorchuk Revocable Trust in an amount not to exceed $298,000. Staff recently learned that the property located at 314 East Eighth Street, which is adjacent to existing property owned by the city, as well as in proximity to the city hall complex, was for sale. The organization in the past has been interested, interested in purchasing available properties adjacent to the key governmental complex in an effort to ensure an opportunity to meet future needs and growth demands of the organization and the facility needs that we have as well. The property is comprised of approximately 8100 square foot lot and a 912 square foot office structure. The current zoning on the property is B1. The structure was built as a home in 1935. However, the property has been used as a business for many years. The property was originally listed for $350,000, but through discussions with the seller, the seller has agreed to a purchase price of $298,000. Staff did commission a comparable market analysis to verify the agree upon price. Because the property is somewhat unique in that it was built as a residential structure, but it has been utilized as a business and is included in a business zoning district, market values for both residential and commercial properties were utilized in establishing the analysis. Three separate properties in close proximity were utilized. The current market values of these three properties range from $278,040 to $325,000 with an average price of $299,680. The mayor and council is aware that I have attached a parcel map showing the proximity. It's essentially west of our campus here. And with that, Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending the mayor and council approve an ordinance authorizing the purchase of the property in an amount not to exceed $298,000, to ratify any documents executed by the city manager, and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to effect said acquisition. Just to give the mayor and council a bit of a timeline on this, we've essentially had dialogue. There'll be two reads for this particular purchase. If the mayor and council approves this this evening, there'll be a 30-day cure period thereafter. And so we've essentially established a closing date at the latter part of November, but after the necessary steps are taken. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd answer any questions.
Any questions, anyone? We've had some meetings on this, so. Okay. I don't think we have any, so seeing no questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 3391, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to acquire property located at 314 East Eighth Street, Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing expenditure of funds, authorizing the execution of acquisition documentation by the city manager, authorizing necessary budget transfers, and ratifying all actions taken by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland?
Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance number 3391 as presented.
Second.
Our motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, we'll move to item J, which is our boards and commissions. Our
boards and commissions tonight are for our Arts and Humanities Commission. We have, I think, five openings on the commission, and a couple of resignations, and then some new appointments that will actually take, take over an existing timeframe. So there'll be various endings in these, in these appointments. So they're not all going to be for three years. They'll be staggered. But did want to thank those who, who were, who volunteered for this, and who are citizens who put their time, their personal time into being on one of the city's boards and commissions. They are a valuable asset to the city, and important information is communicated through them and back to us, and vice versa. So really would like to call out Amanda Stuland, Lisa Swanson, Ralph Varela, Dana Exodus, Jennifer Quartzon, all who have volunteered for the Arts and Humanities. And I see Jennifer is here. She's hiding behind Scott over there. Hi, Jennifer. Thank you for your, for volunteering. I don't think anybody else is here, so, but do want to call them out, and I recommend their approval. So I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the appointments.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you again to our commission, and for their volunteering for this position on the Arts and Humanities Commission. All right, that pretty much concludes tonight's meeting. We're going to do reports since we moved it up. So I'm going to start to my left, Anthony?
Yes. First of all, thank you Pastor from Salvation Army, mentioning your prayer about Pastor Juan, and Pastor Juan has done a lot, even in here. He's done our prayers here. He worked with the National Day of Prayer for us here in the city of Casa Grande. He does so many things in our city, and we need to be praying for him. He had surgery last week, not doing too good, but we praying that the Lord will recover him and fully. And so just wanted to bring that up before everyone, to please pray for Pastor Juan and his wife Linda.
Thank you, Anthony.
Well, I'll add, also, wait, since, oh, well, I didn't.
That ring is so flashy, Anthony. You gotta explain it to everyone.
Okay. Thank you all. First of all, Chief, thank you so much. The DM post to Casa Grande Police Department. I was put in the Hall of Fame at my college on last, the 28th, that was Thursday, last Thursday, and I'm honored by it, so thankful for the opportunity of representing Casa Grande. Even going to New Mexico Highlands University, received, I guess, a scholarship, oh, wow.
There you are.
Sunrise Optimus Club, back in the day, if y'all remember them?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so.
Look at that guy.
I'll be speaking at their, at their meeting coming up. And so, just so thankful for the opportunity to serve as a football player at Highlands University. I wanted to go to Arizona State University, but they did not allow me to come on with a scholarship, so I had to keep moving. So, but I'm just thankful for the opportunity, and truly, it's been a blessing. Was able to see a lot of my colleagues that I played with, championships teams there, and so honored. Thank you all so much for your prayers and, and receiving me, this little boy from Casa Grande. I'm so thankful to be put in the Hall of Fame at New Mexico Highlands.
Congratulations, Anthony.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, just a couple of things. I wanted to thank the chief and the fire department, police department, and all the agencies that helped with the silent witness night. It was a great night out. It was so good to see people back out from the heat and enjoying themselves. I also had the opportunity, a couple of us went to the business after hours for the Chamber of Commerce at Kaywood Farms last Wednesday. It was, it was a great event. Lots of people come out. Also wanted to mention, I got to meet some of the skeet and trap shoot club from the high school. A lot of people don't even know that we have that. And I went out Saturday morning. They didn't let me shoot a gun, but I did go out for a while. And then to fly in at breakfast out at the airport. There's so much going on right now because the weather is becoming, you know, nice again, and people are opening their doors. I also wanted to mention Ironwood Elementary is having a strategic planning on Wednesday that I'll be at, and I think this is a really important time for us to get out and, and help our schools with, with the things that they have going on. And then last, there's a run for foster children 5K at Valago this weekend. Thank you for Danny and his staff for, for working with that nonprofit group to have that at Valago Park. And that's it.
Thank you. Matt?
I got a few things. Thanks, Mayor. This week, on Thursday, which is the?
Fifth.
Fifth, will be the first annual Chamber of Commerce Bowl for the flag, for the ladies' inaugural, for the ladies' flag football, and it's Union High School versus Vista High School, and it'll be at Vista this year. So 5:00 PM Thursday, we've got a great traveling trophy that's going to be going back and forth, and it's really big and really cool. And I want to thank Jennifer for helping with that. Yep, it's our new rivalry. And if you read anything about them, the teams are really good, just handing one of the best teams in the state their first loss. So it's going to be an exciting game, so come out Thursday evening, and the weather will be beautiful because it's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and that's what we do.
Thank you so much.
As is the president. Yes. And then the 21st of October at 9:00 AM will be our annual, or my annual shredding day at First American Credit Union on Pinell. And also, I was told the best-looking Edwards brother Clarence and his crew will be there with his e-cycle. They'll have the e-cycling from the Public Works Department and helping us out a lot.
No coming.
So 9:00 AM, and we'll be going until noon or until the truck is full. And then that evening on October 21st is the Rotary Club's Second Annual Oktoberfest downtown by the Neon Sign Park there. There may be people in lederhosen, there will be bratwurst, there will be pretzels, there will be drinks, food, fun, and it'll be a great time. And again, beautiful weather, I'm assured. So come out to that. There'll be raffle prizes, drawings, food, beer, everything. So it's free to attend. Just have to buy your libations and your food, if you want. And then also have to mention another above and beyond of one of our council members is the Casa Grande Union High School District had problems with their payroll this week, and Jeff Lavender, along with his staff, not, not just him, but they, they took care of it, so that their, their people were taken care of. And I know Jennifer was there too, and they worked through the weekend to make sure that everyone got taken care of from a problem that, that they had at the county payroll department. So good job for that. And once again, just goes to show, when the community comes together, it works out.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Lavender?
Well, it wasn't our payroll system that went.
It was the county's, I said that.
But kudos to our county school superintendent. They worked five days straight to get those checks out. The last ones they got out was Saturday, Saturday morning at 12:20. I'm glad we were not last on their list. So, and thank you for the mention of the game Thursday night. It's going to be an exciting game to showcase some very talented female athletes we have in the community. Also, recently, the district signed Anthony Edwards. Congratulations, Anthony, on making the Hall of Fame. He's going to be providing some mentoring and some athletic development classes for our staff, for our athletes, as well as their parents, utilizing some of the skills and things that he did with the Arizona Cardinals for the years there. So we're excited to have Anthony on board with our team. And Mayor, I know you gave the mayor of Maricopa a hard time after Union beat them 72 to 7 in homecoming. I hope you return it the next week when Vista, Randy, went 5-0 for the first time and beat the other Maricopa school 52 to 7. The combined scores of our two homecoming games against Maricopa was 144 to 14. So I hope you let her have it.
I have. She has to wear, she has to wear, she has to wear a Cougars jersey at a city council meeting. But I needed Cougars jersey.
We'll get you a number 72 jersey.
There you go. Lisa?
That's good. Besides having foot surgery, I'm in my boot here for a couple more weeks. But yes, it's definitely a busy time. You know, I know this is a compliment Jeff, Jeff time here. You know, I attended the town hall meeting he had last week. And, you know, Jeff, I just really appreciate you just communicating with the parents. You know, he had the staff there at Casa Grande Union, and they had a meeting early, you know, several months before where parents addressed some of the concerns, especially with everything going on at the school district. And, you know, you just faced it, I mean, to them, and it was nice to see the improvements and people being happy with the improvements and seeing change. So thanks to you, to you and your staff for being there. You know, I really think the parents, you can tell that they're feeling good about what's happening there. So as far as the activities going on, you know, it's still Hispanic Heritage Month. You know, the Arts and Humanities Commission, Jennifer, you're going to love being on this crew. They do such a great job. This, this particular event's going on for a month. Next Friday night is the Downtown After Dark. I hope you can come. Our community service department's been working really hard, getting some great entertainment. Main Street has the businesses participating. So we have a lot of things going on. So 5 o'clock next Friday night downtown. And I did go to the other event they had at the Art Museum also on Saturday. They had a nice little event with mariachis and some Mexican pastries and drinks and everything on Saturday. So that was really nice. Again, I know that they received a grant from the Arts and Humanities Commission. Let's see, Silent Witness Night was a great night. It was just beautiful. A lot of families out there and businesses. So thanks for everyone getting out there. Boys and Girls Club, the dancer reveal, we getting out there. Boys and Girls Club, the dancer reveal, we have one in here. Jennifer Quartzon is going to be one of the celebrity dancers. So, I know the mayor and I were just like, phew, glad we're done with that. But, no, I mean, there's a great lineup, and it's really fun, and I think you're going to have a really good time until like a couple weeks before, then you get a little nervous. But, so there's some great people, and I know the Boys and Girls Club has something online with all the other dancers, right? Representative Martinez and Keith Seaman and...
Tony Smith.
Yep, Tony Smith.
Or past...
Mike Cruz.
Yeah, Mike Cruz.
Yeah.
So, it's a, that's a good lineup.
Actually, it's Magic Mike Cruz.
Magic Mike. Whoa, that's going to be good.
Mike, oh, boy, I can't wait to see that.
Yes.
Just picture that. Ooh, that's just, that's just, ooh. He's probably going to regret it when it's over.
So, every time you see him, just ask for the bowtie. And then, Friday, we, I know the mayor and several staff members attended the Penal County Housing Roundtable at CAC, and it was really a great session. And I won't go through everything, but they had a lot of different programs when it comes to financing, different affordable housing programs. I think the mayor even arranged for Jackie in our planning department to do kind of like a case study where they presented to the group, you know, some of the property that we have here in Casa Grande and how we can utilize some of the financing and programs that we reviewed. And the group came up with some good ideas.
Yeah.
So, what we can do with some of that property that the city owns. So, good program. There was a nonprofit that was sitting next to me at my table and went there thinking that they're going to maybe do something with housing for seniors, and so they're going to look into something, and so we'll see if that goes forward. So, but it was a really great session.
It was, yeah.
And that's it for me.
Bob?
Mayor, I, too, was one of many that enjoyed Silent Witness Night Out Against Crime, especially thanks to Chief McCrory and Chief Keane. Their departments participated very heavily. But also, thank you to all the other departments. If there was a city department that wasn't represented there, I missed it because I saw city attorney's office, city court was represented, Parks and Recreation was represented. I even saw Kevin handing out candy for Public Works. So, it was a great event and a wonderful event for our city. And then, on Wednesday night, I represented at CAG Regional Council, and that's always exciting, so...
Always exciting.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, that's all.
Like watching paint dry.
Mayor, I have one more thing when you're, if you want.
Go ahead.
Just one more thing I forgot to bring up is, and I wanted to compliment Chief Leos and the Casa Grande PD, as well as Border Patrol and some of the community members. As you guys know, we have, you know, many asylum seekers that are coming in, and they're being processed through Border Patrol. This is something they have to do, and after so much time, they have to be released into the community.
They ran out of space, too.
So, yeah, but they're actually, you know, and again, Chief Leos has been, you know, so wonderful at keeping the communication. There's weekly meetings with Border Patrol and the International Rescue Committee, which is an organization out of Phoenix that's taking in the asylum seekers. So, they're coming, you know, three times a day.
A big shout out to Faith Alliance, too, for their help.
Right, and the Faith Alliance, no, the Faith Alliance and Cara are on the, in these meetings, but the IRC is coming down and picking up the asylum seekers and taking them to their facility in Phoenix. So, by us being so proactive, it's, they, it's not that we're trying to get rid of the asylum seekers. This is an agency that's helping them until they receive their court date and everything. So, they have the room, the capacity, and the services to serve this population. So, thank you to the Faith Alliance. The LDS Church has been transporting twice a day, well, two days a week they're transporting. Cara is offering their vans, and they don't have the staff to drive, but the police department has volunteers that are driving when the IRC is not available to transport. But we are looking for other churches, so if anyone or any organization that might have someone that has free time, we are, the police, you know, Chief Leos is looking for people that could possibly volunteer to transport these people. But it is happening every day. We know this isn't a city issue, but we would rather have this group, you know, in a location that's going to help them, and they're not roaming around, you know, Florence Boulevard or whatever. So, they're just doing a great job. So, Chief, please, you know, Chief Leos has just been so good in communicating that and keeping that group together. So, thank you.
Yeah, big shout out to the police department. So, thank you. Thank you for everything that you guys are doing, especially since we got two hours' notice that they were going to release like 90 people.
Exactly.
So, all right, thank you, Lisa. Just briefly on some of my reports, just, we didn't really send out anything, but I did want to give a shout out to Aaron Walter, who's the new deputy community services director. He was promoted, so congratulations to Aaron. And then, we have, you know, save the date. You're all invited out to the Station 503 and the groundbreaking ceremony that we're going to have on October 25th. It'll be at 9:30 in the morning. It's at the corner of Penal and Rodeo. It'll actually be off of rodeo, towards the rodeo grounds. So, if you have nothing to do and you want to come out and see a groundbreaking, then please join us, because I'll be there. And then, just also, congratulations to our community services group. They did get a Water Infrastructure Finance Authority grant, awarded a $250,000 grant to actually improve or change the City Hall Landscape Water Reduction. And included in that is an education program. Is that all right?
You're going to have to take action on that.
Oh.
Oh, so don't say anything.
Okay, never mind. Forget I said that. I don't want to take, we don't have to take action on the CG links. We already did it, right? So, I can say something about that? All right.
The kickoff.
Yeah, we're going to have the kickoff celebration for the CG links on October 23rd at 9:00 AM over at the Dorothy Powell Center. So, if you want to see the new buses, they'll be there. And come check it out. Again, it's a, it will be a call-in service, and it is the start of our transit system. So, we're slowly getting there. Also, for all of you pickleballers, we have worked really hard to try and schedule this, and I really have to give our Parks Department and our Community Services Department a really big shout out because I know you guys worked really hard on trying to keep, especially two groups, from too much conflict, but I think you guys have a good plan. If you're interested, is this online, the schedule?
Will be.
Will be? Okay. Do you know when?
Hopefully this week.
Okay. So, hopefully this week. And then, we'll get that online for you. And then, I also wanted to just mention that the, our PIO group and department is coming out with some new graphics. You'll see some changes moving forward with Letterhead and some other things. There's, they took the box off of the CG, and it's just kind of a clean CG now, and there's some different color options. So, so, just kind of modernizing it a little bit, just trying to bring the city into a 21st century marketing program. So, anyway, it's all good. And again, congratulations, Anthony, on your induction. And Jeff, really nice job with you and your staff and taking care of your people. And then, we're also continuing to work on recycling, so you'll hear more about that in the future. We've got several options. I even met with a group today that does recycling bins around the city, so we'll be taking a look at that. And again, more information to come. All right, that's all I have. Does anybody have any last minute questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, move?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll give everybody about five minutes, and thank you all for being here tonight.